Good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Select Board Meeting. John Cronin, the Chair, is away tonight, so as Vice Chair, I'll be stepping in to serve the Chair duties. Welcome to our meeting, and we will get started first with the coronavirus community update. Kathy is welcome to come up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Good to see you.
Yes.
Albeit, as I'll say once again, I long for the times that we don't have to do this anymore.
Well, I could just send you a memo by email.
Or when we're not even talking about this anymore.
True. Well, this is a good week, good updates. We have, since we were together last week, we have had twenty-nine additional cases, but we also had ninety-one cases that were reported to have recovered. There have been no changes to the number of COVID-related fatalities, which means that we are down right now to twenty-three active cases. We have not been this low with active cases since November nineteenth. And if you look at the distribution, you'll see that we just have two clusters in single-family homes, mostly single cases in single-family homes, one case in an elderly housing complex, one case at a multifamily dwelling, and we do have one case at a group home, and that is now our seventh group home since last March where we have had at least one case. So, next slide?
Oh, excellent. You're already there. Good.
So, although the numbers continue to climb, the number of recovered certainly is trending in the direction that we would like, and the active cases is definitely a much smaller number than it has been for a while. In terms of our percent positivity, those numbers continue to trend down as well. Last week, our percent positivity was down to two point six nine. The state was at three point four. For the third consecutive week, we were in the yellow, and when you compare that to the towns around us, you will see that all of the contiguous communities, except for Sherburne, are yellow, and Sherburne is actually green. So, we are trending in the right direction, and even our neighbors a little bit to the north in Framingham got to yellow last week. So, that is absolutely the trend that we like to see. In terms of vaccine schedule, not much of a change right now. We are still in Phase Two, Step One. Individuals seventy-five and older, as well as everyone in Phase One, is eligible, and we will continue to be there for a little while. Next slide. So, we do not yet know when the individuals sixty-five and older, and individuals with two comorbidities, or when educators and other sectors will be able to get vaccinated in the subsequent phases of Phase Two, as we are still very focused on the first step of Phase Two. However, this past week, based on some feedback that the state had received, they tried to simplify the MAPP feature, find the local places where people can get vaccinated, a much simplified version. And so, I put the URL there. It's vaxfinder.mass.gov. And it is good that we, the Commonwealth, they're ranks in the top ten for vaccinations per capita, according to the CDC. And last week, we administered more doses per week than are received from the federal government. So, it is very good. So, if someone goes to this vaxfinder.mass.gov, puts in our zip code, they can sort by healthcare locations, such as Milford Regional Medical Center, local Board of Health site, which the closest one would be in Hopkinton, mass vaccination sites currently. Closest one is Gillette. However, they are expecting that they will open the Natick Mall next Monday to appointments. So, those appointments should be available starting Thursday at noon of this week, as well as some retail pharmacies, such as CVS in Milford, are some of our closest options. And the state has launched a new ad campaign encouraging people to know the facts or trust the facts, get the vax, and they are doing some targeted marketing in some communities that have been hardest hit. Of the twenty communities that they're targeting right now, Framingham is the closest to us, where they're doing a lot of outreach for communities that have been disproportionately affected by the vaccine. With that, I will pause and see if there are any questions.
Yes, a couple of questions. I did notice today, I got a, you know, an email blast from Holliston World that said that basically they are starting to report how many vaccinations and things like that. Have we, is there, are they starting to release any by-town information about how many people have been vaccinated?
Not that I've seen.
Okay.
So, one of the challenges that sites who have been approved to be part of the vaccine distribution, like I am right now, there are percentage requirements for them to continue to get their allotment. So, community health centers are sixty-five percent, your mass vaccination sites are ninety-five percent. So, they need to have a high throughput, and so that's why it's very important that any site that is offering vaccinations has the capacity not only to have the people access, have the waiting area for them to be supervised, but also the ability to report into the M.I.A.S. system within twenty-four hours, as required by the state and the federal government, because that's the way they figure out how much vaccine is being used versus what the allotment is. Currently, according to the most recent Department of Public Health conference call that I was on, there are four times as many requests for vaccine as there is in the state allotment. So, we're getting about a hundred thousand shots a week coming into the state. There are local Boards of Health, community health centers, healthcare facilities, who are all saying, "We could use another three hundred. We could use another five hundred." But, you know, they're encouraged. Don't set the appointments until you get confirmation of how much you've already received. And I know there was a little bit of kerfluffle last week with some of the hospitals indicating that their allotment was being reduced. It wasn't so much that their allotment was being reduced, it was just they weren't meeting a certain threshold of having put shots in arms based on what they had, so they weren't getting a new allotment until they had used up what they had, because from when you get your shipment, you need to be able to put that in the arms of people within ten days. So, it's a, and that's another challenge that we have this week, is the supply chain has been hampered by the winter weather. So, some shipments that should have gone out yesterday did not. Other shipments are being impacted today, which is delaying them getting into the points where they need to be throughout the country.
Right.
Which, again, places have scheduled vaccinations anticipating that they're going to have them, like, nay, no, next Monday, and so we want to make sure that those get to where they need to be. So, they're prioritizing based on the throughput and whether or not people are meeting those percentage requirements.
Okay. Yeah, so it's, I realize it's a logistical challenge right now, trying to manage all this stuff. So, I appreciate you having some information there. My other question is, do you have a sense, and I think I know the answer's here, and they're pretty obvious, but I kind of want to see if there's any sort of, like, drivers here, of what exactly is driving the decline? Is it the vaccinations? Is it just sort of like a post-holiday? You know, do we have a sense that it's probably both? I mean, do we have anything in particular? Is, are people eating things? Like, I guess, sort of like, you know, what are we seeing that is actually driving the declines that we're seeing in the number of cases?
So, I don't believe that there's much evidence to suggest that the number of vaccinations is significantly impacting the number of diagnoses. I think what you're seeing is that surge that happened around the holidays, which was related to household groups mixing and people attracting with people that they haven't been interacting with. It was college students who had come home, or it was people who were getting together in informal gatherings.
Sure.
That's where we really saw the surge. And then you have some local variants. You know, there's a lot of focus on the three big variants right now, the UK variant, the South African variant, and the Brazilian variant.
Right.
But there's even Massachusetts-specific variants.
Sure.
It's just that they're not as easily spread, and so it's not, from an epidemiological standpoint, it's not making as much of a splash in the news. But we do have our local variants, and so when they have additional cases that have come from the B-117, which is the UK variant, some of the initial cases were tied to travel, but the cases that they reported in their press conference or their press release over this weekend didn't have travel associated with it. So, that variant is starting to make its way through the Commonwealth without any associated travel. In the same way, you know, we're anticipating that, you know, the Brazilian variant will also start to become transmitted in the Commonwealth, even without associated travel. So, that's, although we've got a decline right now, that's good, and we don't want to, we want to keep our, we want to keep making the improvements. But, so it's a two-fold approach. You need to continue to make sure that everybody gets the vaccination when it's available to them. And then, secondly, you can't stop all of the other mitigation measures. I think some of what also likely contributed to the higher numbers in the last sixteen weeks was there was a big push for testing, because people wanted to travel. And so, either they needed to test ahead of time, or they needed to test when they got back from where they had traveled. So, with more testing, you're going to catch more cases, because a lot of the cases that are coming up in testing are asymptomatic. So, if they hadn't traveled or hadn't wanted to travel.
They might not.
They may never have known that they had a case of it.
Yeah, and I've also heard, my last comment is just, I've also heard some comments and some talk too, from the spreading perspective, is that once it reaches around a third, like thirty percent of, you know, a population, it does start to ebb a little bit. It's not as, it's just because of the nature of how, how these things spread, and they do kind of behave in their own ways and do what they're going to do, and if people are going to get it or not.
And also, some of it is weather.
Yep.
So, you know, more people were inside, and, you know, it's, people weren't doing as much outdoor activity.
Right.
So, they tended to have more exposure potential when they would be inside with people, even with the improved ventilation and attempts at keeping the number of people down. But we knew that second surge was coming. We predicted it back in summer.
Yep.
We told everybody it was coming. I don't think we had any idea how big it was going to be.
Right.
Otherwise, we probably wouldn't have decommissioned some of those skilled hospitals, if we then had to rebuild the exact same location the second time. But, you know, and there will be more spikes, and they're going to be driven by additional variants.
Yep.
And additional social activities.
Okay. Well, as always, thank you, Chief, for bringing us this information. I do appreciate it. And it's beating the same drum, saying the same things a lot of times, but hopefully people are starting to listen, or are continuing to listen and continuing to be vigilant about this, so we can get back to some sense of normalcy.
And we recognize that the stuff that we're asking people to do, it's growing weary.
We're tired of it.
The novelty has worn off, and it's hard to continue to maintain compliance. And there is, you know, fatigue that sets in.
Absolutely.
And complacency, and anger, and bitterness, and frustration, and then, as people are wanting to get the vaccine, it's
It's not easy.
Even more frustrating. And again, once they get the vaccine, that doesn't mean that they can rip off the mask and just go about the way things were before last January. You know, they're going to continue to keep, need to keep these mitigation measures at least through the fall, or possibly into two thousand twenty-two.
We're going to do what we've got to do to beat this. We're going to do it together.
But, you know, the CDC issued new guidance last week for, they refer to school reopening. In our case, locally, it's not really reopening. But, you know, the state issued additional guidance on transportation, which is going to impact how many students can go on the buses, and even as the schools look to next fall, in terms of what the distance between desks is, these are all things that they're taking their guidance from the federal level and looking at it and seeing how our experience has gone along with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
I am also.
Well, you talked about fatigue. I'm just wondering, do you anticipate that you'll be presenting either public service announcements or information to the board and the public about double masking? Is that in our near future? Or we're still talking about really high-risk? And you don't have to speculate, but
Right.
I'm not thinking it's in our future, in the near future.
Not for a general populace. You know, there may be targeted groups that will need to hear that message.
But not TSA or anything like that?
Not unless the research really changes right now.
Okay.
But again, and this is why, with our messaging, I'm very careful, and I talk, I don't just necessarily say a mask. I say approved face coverage. I know that this is something that the schools were developing their guidance last summer before the reopening for the fall. They looked at what was and wasn't approved face covering, because they looked at things like gaiters, which were not very effective at reducing transmission. And so, yes, the procedure masks that we have have one percentage level of blocking ability. The cloth masks, which the gentleman on either side of you, a different percentage. But really, the double masking has to do with your risk profile, what it is that you're possibly being exposed to, plus the fit of the mask on your face. So, sometimes, a second mask may help create a better seal.
Sure.
As well as increase the percentage. But again, that seal becomes more effective, and more important, depending on what department you're operating.
Okay. And then Gillette is a mass vac, mass?
Mass vacs.
Mass vaccination site?
Yes.
Those are the sites, the mass vaccination sites are the ones that you can have a companion attend with you and receive the shot. The local and the Board of Health-driven ones, they do not
That's correct.
Except the companion. Okay. Gillette, and then you said Natick Mall in the near future?
Yes, and Springfield and Worcester are some of the mass vac sites. And again, on the search tool on the state sites, you can click individual types of locations, just look for mass vac.
Right.
If you have somebody that you want to accompany you.
Okay.
Or you can look at all.
Okay. And then you mentioned twenty-three active cases. How many new since last week?
How many new since last week?
Do you have that number? That's okay. Twenty-three is
So, so new cases since last week would be, I want to say that's sixteen?
Okay. And twenty-three active cases puts us as low as we were in early November. It does not put us as low as the summer and early fall.
Correct.
All right. And then, can you speak to the success, the Herculean efforts last week to get the Council on Aging, the Senior Center, prepared to assist our seniors at a higher level? I would imagine it's been very successful. If you have any information you could share about that, any data, any, any good news on how those efforts are playing out?
Absolutely. So, thanks to the board's leadership and voting the CARES Act funding, the Technology Director was able to get an upgrade to our internet service on Tuesday.
Yep.
They were able to have all the lights in operation without any drop of signal. They trained their volunteers. They were making calls and support. And I do know that, for instance, I heard from the Senior Center Director today, that when we had become aware of some additional openings at the Senior Center in Hopkinton, and there were still appointments available for tomorrow, when that was made available, that information was made available to them, they were able to get several Holliston residents registered for that location, which again, is much more convenient than heading to Gillette. You know, Hopkinton Senior Center is much more approachable, smaller scale, it's not as daunting for some of our older residents. So, yeah, they're doing a great job, and they're, they're definitely meeting a need, which is a more personal touch. You know, obviously, the residents can call two-on-one, and they can have the help walking through the registration online. But if there's a specific need, or if there's a transportation gap, that's where calling and talking to somebody locally at the Senior Center or one of the volunteers, that they may already know from other programs, is still beneficial.
Okay, great. That's good. I don't have any other questions. So, if you're ready, we can move on then to number two on the agenda, the CARES Act programmatic update.
Absolutely. So, I don't have any requests for funding this week. I just do have an update we have promised that we would be more transparent with regards to where we were in terms of our spending, and not a lot of expenses were posted since last week. So, our numbers haven't changed that significantly. Even if you look at the pie chart, not much is different from where it was last week. As I said, there were only a handful, maybe half a dozen expenses that were posted since last week. So, that is all that I have.
Any questions, Tom?
I think my only question would be, and it's, you know, it's obviously going to be a little bit fluid situation, but the one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three forty-three that you're projecting through the end of March.
Yes.
Is it reasonable to think that if things continue as they are, that we would see about a hundred and twenty thousand from April through June?
Or possibly a little bit lower.
Okay.
Because some of those were
Yes.
Had embedded some higher surveillance expenses for Board of Health with the contract nursing. And so, as those cases go down, obviously, I would, if the trends continue in the lower direction, then our, I would not expect our bills to be applied with the surveillance.
Okay.
But that's just one of the elements that's embedded in there.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, so we're sort of thinking at this point, if, you know, unless something drastic happens, things being equal, one hundred and twenty-two thousand would sort of be a ceiling, a fairly reasonable ceiling for expectations for those next three months.
If we had the same pattern of spending, in terms of the categories, obviously, I do know that it's possible that we could see another request from the Public Services for a third round of rental mortgage relief, which would bump up your number by a, you know, a predictable amount.
Okay.
But yeah, in terms of known spending right now.
Yep.
Based on those existing categories that you already approved and that are ongoing expenses yet. I mean, we don't have major PPE expenses right now. The fixed costs are your cleaning and sanitizing of the buildings.
Yep. You know, it's like, you know, surveillance, remote meetings, technology, purification, internet.
Yeah.
You know, things that just basically to keep the trains running on time.
And operate the way we've been doing.
Right.
The governance of our community over the last one month.
Okay. No, that's encouraging.
One thing, and I was going to bring it up under item number six, so we can discuss further, but one thing we're probably going to want to discuss as we get back into budget. We've seen a few budgets so far that have come through the Select Board that indicate costs, we're currently covering through CARES, being put into budgets for twenty-two. I think the Select Board, especially, you know, as we approach the end of this month, and you've seen all of the budgets, may want to look back at some of those.
Yep.
Facilities is one.
Yep.
With the cleaning, the high-touch cleaning. COA is another one, where we said, you know, filled it into the twenty-two budget, but is that the right path, depending on where this balance is? I think that's a decision the Select Board's going to want to make in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Okay. So, that's all I have. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you putting this together and giving us this level of detail. It's good to see, understand what's going on here. And, you know, I know you were communicating with schools and things like that, so if they have needs that they can't meet within the money that they've been given specifically for them, so we can help them out as much as possible.
And as of last Thursday, I've added these two CARES Act, sort of, ten-thousand-foot summaries to my weekly report that I posted on the website as well.
Great.
Just so that, you know, not only are they seeing cases, numbers, and positivity rates, and age trends, but now they're also seeing our spending, because again, we want to put as much information out there.
Absolutely. People should know what's going on, and, you know, that we're trying our best as a community to make sure that this money is available to maintain the services that people are requiring to get through the end of town meetings, to be able to meet the needs of its residents. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. Two questions. You mentioned the contract nursing bills will likely go down as the positivity rate and the number of cases in our community trends down.
Yes.
And so, we have not seen the Board of Health budget, and doubt we will before it's approved and sent to the fine. But just, is it anticipated, just Travis's point about CARES Act spending to date moving into the FY twenty-two budget? Should we expect that it'll show up in the Board of Health budget as well, for FY twenty-two?
It should.
Okay. And what was, do you remember what it was for a month?
So, it was, at its height, I think it was ten thousand dollars for November, and they were anticipating, or maybe it was eight thousand for November, and they were thinking it was going to be ten for December, I think was what we looked at.
Um, and then, on January eleventh, this board approved eighteen thousand, I think it was. We made a motion for eighteen thousand for the schools for PCR testing. They, so I'm looking for clarification, is, at their meeting last Thursday, they shared some information on pool testing, and I'm hoping you can shed a little light on it. It sounded like they weren't moving in that direction. They didn't have enough community and teachers to participate in what was being offered. That doesn't affect the request from January eleventh. Those are two separate things.
They are. So, so pool testing was a pilot available
Yeah.
Through the Department of Homeland Secondary Education.
Yep.
Which would be funded through the end of March, for which the school district would then be responsible for expenses from April first forward. And even with the pilot, there would still be soft costs that they would be responsible for even between now and March, if they had a large enough sample size willing to participate. But that is different from the PCR request and the testing that the board approved. That manufacturer still has not released additional machines or opened up to additional customers, so we are not in a position to be acquiring that equipment to deploy to book.
I was just going to ask you for an update on that, Kathy. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, so we're all set. Thank you, Kathy.
I appreciate you.
See you next week.
I'll still be here.
I know. See you at the table next week.
Yes.
Unless you're coming back to the table.
You never know. Sometimes, like, you're in a
You know what? You sure do tonight. Okay. So, moving on to number three on the agenda, warrants?
Yep. So, I will make a motion to approve the town warrant today in the amount of one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents of that one million, two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents with town zero.
Okay. Second that motion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does that motion carry? Thank you. How about comment, Ben?
Uh, the only comment I have is I just wanted to give a nice applause to our DPW. I feel like our, you know, after our first storm in December was a little rough, but I think, I feel like they've done a very good job clearing our roads and things like that. I know I heard some good positive comments. Generally, unfortunately, as a species, we tend to be more interested in being negative and telling the negative things, and so you'll always hear the positive comments as often. But I did hear a few, and I did hear some particular accolades for clearing off some of the snow in downtown last week. That really helped out a lot of people, being able to get around. So, I just wanted to say kudos to our DPW for doing all that, and that's all I have.
Okay. And I'll jump on that and say thank you also to both Holliston Police and our DPW for their efforts to support Thursday, excuse me, Friday's Safe Roots to school winter walk. So, that is a statewide program that encourages students to walk. Pick a day. In the winter, we chose, the schools chose, February twelfth, which was last Friday. And together, the combined efforts of Holliston Police and the DPW made it a successful event, so I wanted to share my thank you for that. Any public comments from the calls? And I will also say, if you have public comment on either the coronavirus community update or the CARES Act programmatic update, please feel free to speak up now. Okay, so not seeing any. We'll move on then to the fifth item on the agenda, which is the update from our town administrator, Travis.
Great. Thank you very much. Chris, if you could pull up the Governance Committee's page, so we can just show people. The Governance Committee has put up their report online, and they are going to now start going through, reviewing it with the groups that they had spoken with previously. I think they're going to start with the Finance Committee next Tuesday, the School Committee after that, and the Select Board in March, as well as myself and Financially Staff. So, if you go to the Governance Committee page, under Boards and Committees, you come to Governance, and then the third one down on the left there is their draft by law articles. So, that is up online for anybody who'd like to see it. Thank you, Chris. I just wanted to make a couple other points here for, and I think this was mentioned when the Select Board voted to approve the messaging when it relates to the annual town meeting, which is May tenth, the fall town meeting, and then also the annual election. I just wanted to point out, this is up on the Clerk's page as well, everything that's going on for the town election on May twenty-fifth. If you are interested in one of the open positions, which I'll read through in a moment, you need to get in touch with the Clerk with your collecting of fifty signatures for Holliston registered voters by April sixth to twenty twenty-one. So, right now, the openings by office are Select Board, one position, three-year term; Board of Assessors, one position, three-year term; Finance Committee, two positions, three-year terms; Board of Health, one position, three-year terms; Housing Authority, one position, five-year term; Trustee of Public Library, two positions, three-year terms; Park Commission, two positions, three-year terms; Planning Board, one position, five-year term; and the School Committee has three positions for three-year terms. So, again, all that information is up on the website. Quite a bit of opportunities to help the community. Those are due by April sixth for the May twenty-fifth town election. Moving to a facilities update, this was a question that came up at a previous meeting, and the update was that the town hall doors, long awaited and desired and the update was that the Town Hall doors long awaited and, um, desired. Uh, and before I throw my shoulder out trying to close them, I hope that this does happen, that they are scheduled for Monday, February twenty-second. Rain or shine, that they will be tented and the work will be done. Um, so we are, uh, very hopeful that that project will finally, uh, conclude. The Town Hall floors replacement and refinishing schedule will be finalized this week, and then we'll make that available, um, luckily, the upper, well, not luckily, but the Upper Town Hall, uh, is not being used, so that the scheduling should not be a conflict there. The painting of the Senior Center interior, which was approved at the December town meeting, um, will be started Thursday of this week, um, and I wanna say that is the eighteenth. The, um, also moving along at the Senior Center is the flooring, um, which will be done after the painting is complete, likely the week of March first. Painting of the library is starting Monday, the twenty-second as well. The carpeting of the library, this is all things that were approved at December fifth, I mean. Uh, the carpeting of the library, um, is being installed likely the week of March eighth. Uh, one last thing is that the vendor for the library masonry, which will have later on the agenda, um, is probably, will be selected, um, but most likely not start until April, uh, just 'cause of weather. So, uh, at this point, those are the facilities updates that I have for you. And lastly, I'll just point out that the Senior Center Director, um, process, uh, the Screening Committee met and passed on some resumes to the final panel, which includes myself, Vecan, and Chris Mayo. Um, and so we will try to get that process moving, uh, and hopefully have, uh, an excellent candidate for the community moving forward. And I will be updating you more on that in the future. And that is all I have under number five.
Any questions?
Um, I think the only question I'd have is, do you have a timeline on when you expect to fill that position for the Senior Center?
We have an end date of the existing director.
Yep.
Um, there is interest from the COA, the outgoing director, and myself to have as much overlap as possible. Um, Linda has also offered to make sure that she could be available if it goes beyond the date in which she'll retire, um, that she'd be available to help the person on an as-needed basis. So, um, ideally, if we could get somebody in before the end of March, which is the end date, uh, for Linda, that would be great, if not, we'll make it work. Um, we wanna make sure we get the right person, that's the most important, of course.
Great. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, and then after that hire is made, uh, will you, you, uh, believe will plan to introduce them to the board? They'll come in for a meeting?
Yes, we'll put them on an agenda to meet the board, uh, and introduce themselves to the community, as I'm sure they will also do through some COA meetings.
Right, okay. Um, thank you, and, uh, any of our callers have any questions for the town administrator or any comments related to what he shared? Okay, so we'll move on then to, uh, item six here on the agenda, FY twenty-two budget and revenue update. Um, anything to share, Travis?
So I think, at this point, uh, as I indicated here, um, we don't have any specific budget review scheduled for this evening. I think next week we'll have the DPW highway. I'll also bring back, uh, take that opportunity to bring back, uh, DPW water. I have a couple tweaks, nothing to the bottom line, just within the budget. Um, but since we'll have Sean with us, I think that'll be, um, worthwhile exercise. And then we'll have the motor vehicle fuel budget, uh, which I was working on this week. At that point though, I think will also be a good opportunity for us to take a holistic view. We're getting to some of the larger budgets when it comes to DPW. Uh, later next week also we'll have Fire, Amilants Emergency Management, followed by Police. Um, so again, these are some of our larger budgets, um, driving the town side. So I think at this point, you know, additionally, the school did present the budget to the School Committee last Thursday, so I can give you sort of that perspective and a more of a holistic view on where we are with the budget, uh, take another look at revenue. Um, so I think, you know, Monday night, we'll wanna make sure we hit those high notes, um, and take a, take a more holistic view. But, uh, having now, uh, preliminary budget from the schools, having a preliminary budget as well from Keith Tech, uh, which came out last week as well, um, I think, you know, starting Monday night, we'll be able to sort of look, put the whole piece together and look at it that, from that view. Um, and I, I think, as I mentioned earlier, when Chief Kathy was up here, some of the budgets that this board has reviewed previously and some of the questions that came up during those, which was, should we be factoring in, let's say, for example, thirty thousand dollars in the facilities budget for, um, two times a day high-touch surface cleaning? Should we be considering that in the facilities management budget for twenty-two, or should we be considering from CARES? I think that's a question, um, that I intend to bring back to the board for further discussion before, you know, and revoting some of the budgets that we've already sort of reviewed, um, is perfectly fine from my perspective.
Uh, my only question, uh, for you is just that, are there any changes to the revenue assumptions that we've put together so far for FY twenty-two?
No, so the last update that I gave you was after the Governor's budget for twenty-two, so the update state aid to flat. Uh, I think some of the feedback that I received from that was, um, you know, I think the point needs to be made that the flat state aid is certainly, it's better than assuming a reduction, right? Now, I don't think we need to assume a reduction. At the same point, flat state aid is not necessarily a good thing for us, right? In the long run, what we'd really need, like to see is growth out of state aid. And, you know, a couple of years ago, before COVID, there was this whole, you know, push from the state level to say, chapter seventy specifically within our state aid number is going to grow. The state was going to make a concerted effort-
Right.
-to make chapter seventy grow, and that was gonna affect all communities, and that was something that we could, you know, that could make a real impact on the town's operating budget. My hope is still that, at least in twenty-two, we can potentially see something greater than just flat. Right now, the assumption that I have built in is for flat state aid.
Yep.
So, one of the other things, you know, I think that this board, and I did have a discussion with Rep. Dykema's office today, and, uh, once I have a, a final date, I'll bring that to the board, but I'd like to bring Rep. Dykema and Senator Stolka back to sort of give us their perspective on it. Um, I think that will probably happen the first week, first or second week of March, but, you know, again, we'll, it's- The most important thing is that we get the information when they feel like they can give us the most information-
Absolutely.
-that we can act on. Um, and so, at this point, the assumptions that I last presented, which included flat state aid from, actually really flat state aid from twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two, um, is nothing has changed since that point.
Okay, right, uh, that's, those are the only other questions.
Next week with DPW here, would we also, would you provide an update or have them provide an update on the snow and ice budget? Is that a-
Absolutely. And so the snow and ice, um, as you voted as a board last week to allow to go over the two fifty, um, I think there's a, there's a lot of possibilities of how towns handle snow and ice. Um, you know, I think at this point, within FY twenty-two, uh, and in past years, the town has gone over the snow and ice budget, which is very common, just so everybody is aware. The snow and ice budget is one of the ones that's historically were allowed to go over. Um, there's a few different ways to handle that. One is, you know, other line item transfers of budgets that have balances at the end of the year can transfer to cover that. Also, I think that's been well-publicized, that the reserve fund for FY twenty-two, based on a lot of unknowns, was beefed up this year. That's certainly a possibility to cover the overage. Um, but at this point, you know, it's difficult to say how we're gonna cover the overage when we're still in February. Um, and, you know, if, if we have, like we have had in previous years, we go into April and we're still having snowstorms, you know, there's gonna be a potential variety of ways that we'll handle it.
But what did talk to Donnie Stil say, I forget?
I did not pay attention to the groundhog. There was a big groundhog day push downstairs, and I, I didn't pay attention to it, I'm not sure. Do you guys know?
Spring coming early or late?
Late.
All right.
That's fine.
That's not good, okay.
We can, I can certainly factor that in next week as well.
Yes, please do provide that update. Um, okay, so I think moving on then from, um, agenda number six, we'll move into seven, Board Business. Uh, and we have, I believe-
Surprising no one, there's a gift for the fire department. Oh, excuse me, a grant.
Same floor.
Same floor, that's, that's what threw me off, okay.
I believe you have that, so you're gonna have to hand that to that one.
I do, I do. Okay, so, um, I'm going to make a motion to, um, accept a grant to our fire department from EOPSS DFS. Chief, could you- That, thank you. Um, and the purpose of this is a SAFE and Senior Safe, uh, grant, and it is in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars, and it will be, um, accepted to the accounts, Safe and Senior Safe grants.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations. Okay, um, and then we have the meeting minutes of January twenty-first and January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. I move to accept both of those meeting minutes.
I will, uh, second that motion to approve them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, uh, that carries. And then we have the recommendations from the American Legion on the Memorial Day Committee, and so I move to accept the recommendation, uh, along with a thank you for willingness to serve, um, Stephen Bradford, Stephen Napolitano, and Walter McGrath.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a discussion on the Community One Stop for Growth, and the discussion is centered around submitting an expression of interest. So I think this is something we wanna open up to the limited board, but board discretion here, um, on what this is and what it offers the town. So I don't know if you had a chance to review any of the information, Ben, but it's a, it's a sort of a collecting of a bunch of different grant programs. It was rolled out during the Massachusetts Municipal Association's conference, annual conference at the end of January.
Mhm.
And it gives a gathering spot, both online and through a common application for, again, a variety of grant programs, which I won't name here, um, but there are several that would be of interest to the town of Holliston. So, um, the way the program was rolled out is there's an initial period in which a municipality can submit an expression of interest. And the benefit to doing that is, um, to receive feedback from many of the stakeholders in these various grant programs, so that you can fine-tune your project, you can answer unanswered questions as you prepare an application. Once the application's in for any one of, up to five projects, um, you then are eligible, become eligible to, within any one of the, whether you apply, within any one of the grant programs. So it's really, I think, an effort to streamline the process. The piece that really spoke to me was this expression of interest allowing feedback. So I think, not having gone through the experience, I think, uh, the way it was described was that a municipality wanting to apply would previously have had to have answered up to three hundred questions on a variety of different applications, and this case you're up to ninety, and you get the feedback ahead of time to direct you in the most, um, appropriate way. So, um, I think it's an important step for the town of Holliston to take, which is to prepare an expression of interest. Um, Travis, do you wanna speak to that at all? I think we have a couple of projects that fall under the variety of grant programs within the One Stop, um, site, but, um-
Yeah, so I think the, the key dates for the submission of expression of interest is between February eighth and April second, twenty-twenty-one. Um, and so at this point, uh, then following that is the, uh, submission of a single applicant from May third through June fourth. So, the expression of interest, I think, um, what I'd be looking for is the Select Board to approve, um, us putting, going through that process, uh, I'd be happy to talk about the, the three projects that I think, you know, make the most sense. But again, what I think is good about this, if it's, if it works out the way it was described at the MMA conference and by the state, is really, you know, we put forward a, a project that previously we'd sort of be looking at, is this right fit over here, over here, but then the state is really looking at the project and saying, you know, asking some questions and then saying, this is really the right way to go with it, um, to support the, the project itself and line it up with a grant, potentially the best funding source for you. Um, that's the idea behind it. It loops in a lot of other grant programs that I've had experience with in other towns that, um, can be difficult to approach, because it's always sort of, the way that the grant programs exist and have been used is always a little, uh, difficult to sort of understand from the outside. So I think, you know, part of the feedback that they've received is people don't necessarily know how to approach those grants, and this is a different way to do it. So you express interest, you give them a project, and you're gonna hear back where they think is the right fit. Um, if it works, I think it's a great idea. Um, and so I think, you know, for a couple, you know, Nine Green Street, I think would be the best example I would give, which is I've been looking for a number of different areas that I think, when you read through different grant opportunities you find through the Mass.gov website, certainly fits. What I'd really love is for somebody to tell me exactly where they think is the best fit for it. Um, and there are a couple others, but, yeah, I, I, I think it's certainly worth our time to be going through the expression of interest process here, um, and I would look for support from the board to do that, at which point, you know, I would be bringing back any feedback to the board.
Okay. Any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions, I think it's a great thing. I like seeing this, uh, these kinds of, uh, streamlining efficiency, um, ideas. I think there needs to be more of them to help us out, um, sometimes it's just, uh, good to point people in the right direction. So I think it's a great thing, and I fully support, uh, this, uh, this, uh, expression of interest.
Okay, so then I will move to direct the town administrator to submit an expression of interest to the Community One Stop for Growth program.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that carries. Then moving on, we have the contract from AP Associates for twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars for drainage and roadway improvements, um, in the Mudville neighborhood. Any questions about that, Ben, or comments?
No, seems to be pretty straightforward to me. I think, uh, I can make a, I mean, unless you have, uh, any comments if you want me to make a motion, I certainly can.
Uh, true, uh, it will, um-
Or does that, or does, uh-
I don't think we, we addressed this multiple different times, I don't think we need to open it up for public comments.
No, we're just awarding a contract, this has been approved through town meeting and all that. It's, it's just really your, um, your responsibility to be, um, uh, giving you the information, and if you have any questions, I can certainly answer it, but, uh, as you said, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so then I move to, um, award the contract to AP Associates, uh, for twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars for drainage and roadway improvements in Mudville, in the Mudville neighborhood.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, that carries. Then moving on, we have the contract for the library mason repair and restoration project. We received four bids, three completes, and so I move to accept the lowest bid NG, NJ at Substruction Incorporated, Danvers, Mass, for the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
That's the one where, uh, oh, so it's not, yeah, got it, okay, I will, uh, second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And then the last, under Board Business, is the contract for Upper Town Hall flooring. Previously, the board had awarded that to, uh, JC Flooring, Floor Covering Incorporated. We are withdrawing that award and reissuing it to O'Sullivan Flooring Company Incorporated, Quincy, Mass. Um, and the difference is five hundred dollars, so the O'Sullivan Flooring Company bid was for seventy-one thousand and twenty-four dollars. Any comments or questions on that, or is there any explanation that you wanted to provide?
No, I would just point out that, um, the, um, the bid deposit was not in order for the original one. Um, again, they were so close, uh, and they both, their references both checked out. It's really just an issue of, we have to award it to the lowest responsive bidder, um, and without the bid deposit in the first one, uh, we'd have to remove them, uh, and give to the second. Again, the, the actual impact dollar-wise is not significant, so that's a good thing. Uh, and I'm glad that we had two, um, right, with, with good reference checks, but one with their paper open order.
So do we have to make a motion to take it away from one, or can we just re-award?
You're just making a motion to award to O'Sullivan, got it.
And Travis, that does not change the schedule you spoke of earlier. Uh, so I move to, um, award the Upper Town Hall flooring contract to O'Sullivan Flooring Company Incorporated, Quincy, Mass, again, to the dollar amount of seventy-one thousand twenty-four dollars.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, and that is Board Business completed. Is there any other business?
I don't have any other business, sir.
Nor do I. Travis?
Nor do I.
Anybody in the room or on the call? Okay, well, then I move to adjourn tonight's February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, meeting at seven fifty PM.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, thank you for attending, we'll see you next week.